All right, we call the meeting to order. If we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, if the clerk would call roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee Wojciechy.
Present.
Trustee Dante. Supervisor Bussie.
Present. All right, if there's any public comment, see none, we'll move forward. The consent agenda, this is the authorization for payroll bills for the town fund, the general assistance, and the road department and sewer. Also, my reports on social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, and transportation and financials. You've all had time to look at it. Is there any questions or can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Once again, any discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Wojciechy.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
All right, then we have to approve the October 25 regular meeting minutes. Is, if can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any questions or comments on the minutes? Boy, you guys are pretty good. They always question mine.
Good minutes. Those were good minutes.
Well, Ellen must do this right. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Wojciechy.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
We'll now get into presentations. Walter Wilson, who was our new VSO, our veteran services officer is, was supposed to be here tonight, but I think something, I think there was something that I was told has held him up. We'll try to get him at one of the next meetings. We opened up the VSO office about two weeks ago. I think he started, starting with two days, will go to three days. The VSO office provides information for veterans, their dependents and survivors, on state, local, state, and federal benefits that are available to veterans, dependents, and survivors, and provides assistance for them in not only understanding what they are, but also in receiving them. So this is, I think, a great addition to the township, and I think it's a great service we'll have here, and we'll, oh, he is, he is former Navy too, Dick, so.
Nice.
He's gotta be a good guy. So he will, he will, we'll try to give him at the next meeting to just introduce himself and say hello. Okay, if we can move on to presentations, finance, Erica.
Hello, good evening. As you know, I'm Erica Rens, and I'm the finance director here at Elk Grove Township. I've been an employee with the township now for over eighteen years, so I'd just like to take a few minutes of your time to kind of go over some of my duties and responsibilities. First of all, I am responsible for payroll and employee benefits. I process payroll bi-weekly, every other week for our employees, and monthly for the elected officials. I file and pay federal and state taxes, prepare quarterly and annual returns, send in the monthly reports for our pension program, for unemployment, and I enroll the employees into their health, dental, vision, and life insurance. So I manage all of their benefits coming in and going out, or any changes that they want to make throughout the year. I'm also responsible for paying all of our invoices, and you're familiar with those, that's the packet that everyone approves on a monthly basis. When you review the bills, I know you guys are checking the invoices amounts versus maybe what's paid, but I would also like to encourage you to use our monthly financials that you guys get in the board packets, so that you can have an idea of what line item the bills are being charged to. You can look at the financials to see kind of where we're at for the year. Maybe we're getting too close to the amount that we should be spending for the year, or the amount that we've budgeted. You guys would be able to kind of keep that in mind for the future invoices before maybe they're approved. Just a little suggestion on that. I also assist Paul with the preparing for the budget and for our tax levies every year. I help him with the numbers to prepare, to get everything situated. We send in reports to the state. I prepare annual, or annual treasures report, all of our financials for our annual town meeting, and maintain all the files and information that helps us get through our audits on a yearly basis, which we've always had very good reports on our audits. I've never had any problems with that, so it's, you know, maintaining good files and being able to answer questions that the auditors have has been something that I've been kind of proud of. Currently, I manage our sewer department. I took that over after one of our past employees retired. So we have three hundred and twenty-five sewer customers on our billing right now. We bill them quarterly. On average, or basically for the residential homes, we bill them twenty-four dollars a quarter, and businesses can range anywhere from ninety-six a quarter to, we've got some that pay like nine hundred and sixty dollars a quarter. So I prepare the invoices for that every, sorry, I keep saying quarter, and put in all the payments and whatnot as they come in. I actually have just started to include Kasha, who's up at the front desk, helping out in the sewer department, so she's gonna start entering the bills or the payments, so I have a little bit of help, which is nice. I process all the deposits that go to the bank. I reconcile all of our bank statements. We have five different accounts right now. We've got investment accounts that I maintain on a monthly basis, CDs that are coming to maturity, you know, making sure that we're getting rates and terms that are good for investments. On a daily basis, I go on our bank account to do a thing that's called positive pay, and that's, I have to verify every check that goes through the bank to get cleared. I have to manually allow that check to go through, which is just a checks in balance so that no fraudulent checks clear our account. As far as our general insurance for our buildings and our vehicles, I track all equipment that comes in and goes out on our industrial appraisal report, so I'm in charge of stuff like that, keeping track of, making sure our buses have current insurance cards, et cetera. And from time to time, I even help out in the front office because the ladies get busy or someone's not here, so I help out with phone calls. I'm, you know, knowledgeable about most of the goings-on of the township, so I'm able to help them answer questions, or if someone comes to the front office, I can even sell a hunting and fishing license, so. In a nutshell, that's really, I just, all I, my job entails, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot that come in and, you know, different things happen, but in a nutshell, that's my duties, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Guys got any questions for her?
No.
No, excellent.
And obviously, anytime, if you guys ever had a question about a bill, I'm only an email or a phone call away of more of an explanation of why we pay certain things, which I think everything's probably pretty self-explanatory on the invoices themselves. But yeah, I'm always available for any questions that you guys have about anything at any time.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
You do a great job, thanks.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think that we all need, you guys all need to, that all need to realize is that Erica is really indispensable to the operations of the township.
Yes.
She handles virtually all the financial matters, and even though we, the trustees and the supervisor, have oversight, and we look at the bills and we, that's, that's the woman that keeps us out of jail. She's the one that does all the, all the work and on every side of financial, does a tremendous job, and does a lot. So I think we, we owe her a big thanks for the work she's done, and the audit really stands out there. We've had no issues in the audit, as far as I can remember, and that's a fantastic job. So thank you very much. I think a lot of times what you do goes not only unappreciated but unknown, and that's kind of good, because if it was known, then there was probably, probably be so, there might be a problem. So the more you stay unknown, the better it is, maybe, so. So thank you very much, Erica, we really appreciate everything you do.
Yeah, and if I may refresh my brain, how long have you done this for, in this position?
Over eighteen years.
Oh, again, thank you for doing what you do.
Yeah. One other thing too, is I think was interesting point, or interesting, a good point where she said, is when we're looking at the bills, when you guys audit the bills, it's just not the amount against the amount. You also should be kind of looking at who the bill's being paid to, whether that makes sense or doesn't make sense to you. You also should be paying a little more attention into the dollar amount, whether that makes sense or doesn't make sense, and, and those are the questions you need to ask of Erica or Paul. And, and then the other one is, I think she's gonna have the financial statements there too, just to get an idea where you can see, if there's an area where you've seen a lot of bills, you can look at the line items and see if they're, if we're tracking in line with the budget, or if we seem to be out of sync. It may not be a problem, even if we are, but you should be aware of that, maybe raise that as a question or an issue, saying, hey, you know, we budgeted this for five thousand dollars, and I've seen bills here read last couple of months, it looks like we're running well above that. Or, or you even look at where it's, where it's running, I mean, because you, it has the, the monthly, the monthly comparison, you can see if we're running up against the stops on, on some of these budget items. So you really, really should be looking more broadly than just that the dollar amounts jive. Okay? All right, thank you again, Erica. Ellen, with transportation.
I think Erica is kind of a hard act to follow. I mean, I actually also help in the front office, but the only person I've been successful to get a fishing license was for myself. And I do help out there when I need to, but my name is Ellen, and I am actually the transportation field coordinator. George and Paul have asked me to step into that role just recently, in the last several months. I've often always had a lot to do with that and, and had the lead on it, but, but now I've taken that a little bit further, actually. So I've worked here for just a little bit longer than Erica, almost twenty years. We have actually two other drivers. I affectionately call them the boys, and they, they both have quite a lot of driving experience. Paul's been with us for about five years, and Kevin about three years, but came to us with a lot of experience. I drove a school bus for about fifteen years before I came to drive for the township, so we have a lot of experience. We have a lot of love for our seniors. We actually transport senior and disabled, seniors fifty-five plus and disabled over eighteen years of age. Our boundaries, I'm sure you guys are all pretty familiar with that, but our boundaries to the north are central. Northwest Community Hospital is actually across, which technically is in Wheeling Township, but of course, we service all the doctors and hospital along Central. To you Displanes guys, that's Mount Prospect over to the east, and Devon, where Dale and I are back over this way, and then Rowling Road is to the west. So those are our official boundaries, although I have to say, we, we try and be very generous. If there's a need for someone to go, you know, right across, there was a very large doctors group that left Alexian and moved just right across Devon, so of course, we discussed that, and we agreed to continue to transport the people. It would be silly for us not just to cross the street when there's such a great need for that. So sometimes we do go, we try and go above and beyond, and a little bit out of the boundaries that's reasonable, that can really service a lot of the people. The township has actually three buses, and I'm not sure which one of you guys was able to participate in the parade, because then you were able to get on one of our new buses. So you got to see how nice they are, so they're actually about a year old, two of the buses are, and our other one is eighteen passenger. The two new little ones are twelve passengers. They're all equipped with wheelchair. The newer buses actually have a limit of an additional four hundred pounds. I guess the, the need has increased to have a heavier lifting lift, and that's simply because the new chairs that they're building are so automated, and I mean, they tip and they tilt and they go up, and they have huge battery packs, so for one of our residents that we transport, his chair alone starts at like three hundred and fifty pounds with everything on it, so there was a need to have a lift, you know, that. That can go a little bit higher, so they have incorporated that, actually, which has been very nice. We're able to take scooters, walkers, a lot of shopping carts, to be honest with you, empty going in, but full coming out, so then it would need to come up the lift. We, we spend a lot of our time back there with the lift, because we just, it seems like our residents are just getting a little bit more senior-like, and there's really a huge, huge need for that these days. So we do have a donation box, so we are at-will donation. I believe that we're actually the only one left that I know of, of any township's pace, any, anyone who still runs at, at a donation. And I think that's pretty important, because a lot of the people that we're starting to transport are in different facilities where they're giving their whole check to the facility, and they're getting fifty or sixty dollars for all of their personal items. So I think it's really important that we stay down that lane. We hear that from, from a lot of the people in Elk Grove here, they're able to take the dialer ride, and it's only sixty-five cents each way, but in reality, they'll say, if, if I go three or four or five times a month, for someone like me on a very fixed income, it's a matter of me either not getting my medicine or riding the bus to get my medicine. So, so that's actually pretty important, I feel. The, the bus application, I think I left something for you all there, if you want to peek at it. So they fill out that application, they turn it in to us, we can very quickly get it all into the system, and they're good to go. We ask that people make their appointments between ten-thirty and three, and that's only because we have so many dialysis people on a very daily basis, actually. We service three different dialysis centers. There are three, you know, within our boundaries, and we do go to all three of them on different days. And typically, they're on their machines all day, so we need to get them there first thing in the morning. As soon as, you know, we arrive at nine, we toddle off to our buses, and that's the first thing we all do, is try and get everyone to dialysis so they can get on their machines. And we typically pick them up between, I would say, two and three, you know, everyone is dialysized for a different amount of time. So that naturally is our priority. We have, we actually have a few people right now on radiation and some on chemo, so that goes to the top of our priority list. I, I'm not saying that grocery shopping, and believe me, some of the seniors will call and argue with you that them getting their hair done is just as much of a priority as any doctor's appointment, so we do have kind of a natural, a natural list of priorities, but we do try and accommodate everyone. If we were not able to take them today, we'd say, you know, we're just like pretty, pretty crowded with doctors, but we invite you to try tomorrow. So we do try and, and help everyone and work it out for every different person. There are some special exceptions, and we do try and go above and beyond to help them with whatever little need they have. Maybe they just got out of a rehab and they don't have a wheelchair, so I will just go over by Miriam and we'll check one out, and then I'll actually take it to their home so they can immediately start then riding the bus. So we, we just try and do everything we can to serve as many people as we possibly can, actually, within the township. This actually has all the employees' names, because we, you know, we didn't really want to, but I brought, so this is tomorrow's actual sheet, so the sheet can be quite full. So logistically, what happens, the people have to call by three o'clock, they get put on the sheet. After three, I take the sheet and I divide it up into three different buses. I've been doing that for quite a while, so it's a little more second nature to me. We divide it typically like from the north to the south, so we kind of divide it by hospitals. So everyone going to Northwest is on one bus, everybody coming to Alexian Brothers is on the other bus, and then we kind of filter it all down that way. It can be quite a logistic nightmare when, you know, you have like twelve people, and their appointments are all at eleven o'clock, but spread all out over the township boundary. So it can become very tricky, but our bus riders are very thankful, they're very patient, they're very understanding, understanding about the priorities. We're really fortunate that we have such lovely people that we're able to drive. Some days are busier than others, so when the day is a little lighter, I, I do come into the office, I do help out at the front office. Today I was helping with the Thanksgiving giveaway, so I can wear a lot of different hats. Sometimes we'll do some COVID food deliveries or whatever needs to be done, because I've just been around for a little bit longer than everyone, I can slip into those roles pretty easily, actually. We have about four different senior facilities that we go to, and we actually have two disability housing complexes that we travel to, so we have a, a big realm of, of a lot of different people. Some of the assisted living really takes up a lot of our time, having to do with doctors. Asbury Court over there in Displanes does have their own vehicle, but, you know, it's such a large facility, so we often will go and kind of round up maybe three or four right away in the morning, and take them off and drop them off at the different entrances at the hospital. And actually, after we've dropped them off, they have the, the main phone call, the main phone number that they call. We actually have walkie-talkies that we use, and they're actually legal, because we use them in a walkie-talkie fashion, so Jesse White has declared, you know, that they are legal, and that's how then we will have communication with the office. They'll call and say, oh, I'm ready, we'll call back and say, oh, I think it's, you know, gonna be thirty minutes, and then they know exactly where we dropped them off, they'll wait there. It's, it's actually really a good system. We used to use like the old two-way radios, and as everyone came across all the different wavelengths, we, we had to go to something else. We have the graph of our bus rides per year. If you notice, in 2020, that actually was a big lockdown year for some of the facilities where we transport a lot of people, you know, the different assisted living. They were pretty much operating on a COVID lockdown, so our numbers did drop a little bit for that, and during that whole process, we had a very, very secure series that we would go through after transporting people, having to do with cleaning the bus and, and keeping everyone safe, and socially distancing them, and it was really quite of a logistic trick to keep everyone safe and healthy and get them where we need to go, but I honestly think we did a really good job. And as you see, we're getting up on the rise here again, so I, I feel really good about how that's going, that people feel safe. We, we get a lot of really nice comments about how they feel safe and secure coming on the bus, so I do feel really, really good about that. I think that was kind of a quick overhaul of everything that goes on. I understand that Paul covered the trip in the discount taxi, so that comes under the, the transportation umbrella, not necessarily under my umbrella. I, I do keep the maintenance for the different food pantry vehicles and stuff. I keep that maintenance and make sure that they're up to date, and they got their backup camera and, and those kinds of things. And Erica and I work together to make sure everyone's got all of their stuff updated, and are there any questions? Did you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, could you, Ellen, could you go back through, what are the buses we have? What are their ages and their sizes? And which ones are, need to be turned, and what will they need to be replaced with?
Sure, so the two new ones are twelve passengers, so they're just gonna be a year old next month. Those are F-350s, those, those are Casiruses. The other one, eighteen, that has, it just ticked over to a hundred and fifty-two thousand miles. That's an eighteen passenger. That's actually an F-550. We wrote the specs for that bus, so it's built a little bit differently, so we're kind of sitting down in a hole a little bit, and then the passenger, so it has a completely different suspension. I often joke that that could climb a mountain. So we, you know, we've talked about how we're going to get on that cycle, to recycle that, and that is on our radar, actually. The next bus that we acquire, we will have to write the specs for, so I am working on that, that's on my radar. The thing is, the, the two twelves, we got off the lot, and, and those were very sufficient for us, but as we're going to more of the nursing homes, especially over in Plum Creek, that's over in Rolling Meadows off of Algonquin, so we call it the Walker Parade, so the Walker Parade will come out, and there will literally be eight of them, and they all just want to go to Walmart shopping to just get a few things. So it's, it's very logistically difficult, you have to kind of piggy them back up on the bus, but, but we are writing the specs for a bus where one whole row of seats then will flip up and sit against the back wall, so this is the seat, it will actually sit up against the back wall. So then, I would be able then to fit a lot more walkers, and then the people could still walk down the aisle and get in the seat, but we're, we're finding more of a need, not that we necessarily have to lock down two wheelchairs at one time, but it's more about from these group living facilities, and they all want to go together, and we have room for their bodies to sit in the seat, but to be honest with you, if two of them have a wheelchair and then we have all these walkers, it's almost like we're having to make multiple trips, and then the, the schedule kind of gets, logistically, a lot more difficult. So for, for that bus, we really have to write the specs, so I have been working on that. I mean, you really have to write it from every nut and bolt and window lock and every, everything, you know, the kind of seats you want, and the kind of rubber you want on the floor, and what you want, you know, the driver's seat made out of, so it's, it's complicated we're, we're able to do that, but because of all, you know, the shipping nightmares that you hear about everywhere, I've just recently been told that it will be a lengthy, several months of a process to acquire all the parts that we need, and so I, I'm actually always on the lookout. I kind of chase other people in their buses, and I say, oh, hey, can I take a peek on your bus? So I can get different ideas from different buses, and what we might want to have on our buses. Sometimes we're looking at the pace styles, but the pace right now is having a, what I consider not a really accessible style, because as soon as you enter into the service store, that's where the wheelchair lift area is. So people have to come up the sta- where the wheelchair lift area is. So people have to come up the stairs and then go past all the strappings that we use to lock down the wheelchairs to get to their seat. I'm not a fan of that style and that's what they seem to mass producing at this time. And so that's why we need to write the specs. So, you know, we're really getting the most of our money. We're getting exactly what our bus riders need and a bus that's gonna have the most longevity for us.
So what is the, what would be, what is the most optimal bus fleet in terms of 12, 18, whatever? What is, what is, what would meet your needs the best?
You know what, the specs that I'm writing for actually will be between a 21 and a 24 passenger because I need to have that many seats to like flip up so I can have all that room to put all those walkers. I mean, back in the day, when our 24 was operational, we were able to take trips. I know, we haven't been able to during COVID, but yeah, hopefully this won't last forever and we can go back to taking them, you know, to the mall. They just really all love to get on the bus together and communicate with each other and they call it the party bus and they're so happy. And so then we take them to some different, you know it's true, and they laugh and they have a good time. So we're hoping to get back to that, but right now we don't have a vehicle to do that with.
Are we using the 18 right now?
So we're hoping to get to that as things loosen up and, so that's, that is what I'm trying to do, write the specs.
So we'd have two 12 and 18 we would replace with a 2021?
Correct.
And that would meet the needs as you see that now?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Do you use the 18 right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. And it's just, again, a matter of logistics. So I mean, if this is tomorrow's sheet, I mean, granted, we have to do a few Thanksgiving basket deliveries for people that were not able to come. So some of that is that, but you know, these are going to two different hospitals, two therapy places, the two different Walmarts, the Jewel, Valley, two Doctors on Central, a UPS store, therapy again. So it's, it's quite all over the place.
No, I think, I think the service that you guys provide is very important and it's a, and I think it's not only important for, for the seniors to be able to independently live their lives, but it's also important too from a social component. I think you and the drivers have been a very valuable connection to some of these, some of the seniors who don't have a lot of people to interface with all the time.
It is, that is so true. Actually, one of my favorite little ladies, Mrs. Howe, came out the other day and she had her TV clicker in her hand. And I'm like, oh, I thought you're gonna go to the store today. She goes, I am, but, but do you know how to use this? I don't know if it needs new batteries or, I, and to be honest with you, I don't, it was not a television clicker. I'm not sure what it was, but it was definitely not a television clicker. And I'm like, so Mrs. Howe, I'm pretty sure this is not the clicker for your television. I said, so go back in, next time you ride the bus, bring that guy out and maybe it just needs new batteries. And I mean, so we really love our seniors. We love them, we do everything we can for them, you know, within, you know, the boundaries that we have set for us. And really, something important, George, that I know is important to you, when we're out on the road, we try and be a really good representation for the township. I train, educate the boys about the services that have changed, that are coming up. We bring extra pamphlets on our bus, so if anyone asks me anything, I have some information right there to give them. We have business cards, you know, they want to know how they can get here and the logistics of it, or do we do this, or, so, you know, even now, someone, actually one of our regular bus riders now has an appointment to come and see Walter. So we try and also, you know, just pass out all different kinds of information and just highlight the whole township while we're out on the road because we do field a lot of questions, I'll have to say.
I think the communication within our organization is essential and I think we've really tried to expand that so that we're talking among each other and that we're complimenting each other. But I think what you do then with your clientele, that clientele may benefit from other things we do as well too.
Exactly.
And that's really great that you're doing that.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Any other questions about transportation?
You know, I had a-
I'm happy to drive any of you anywhere. Ask George. I used to see George like running home from the train when it was raining. Hey, George, you wanna get on the bus?
I had a question going back to, you said that there is a donation box that exists. You said it's out there. So where's the donation box and are people aware of it? If they are, how do we let them know that this exists, donation box?
Actually, on the new buses, I had the donation box mounted right on the handrail.
Okay, so they're on the-
Coming up the stairs, the box is literally right there. We found a safe way because we find, we want them to be on a steady ground before they put, so as soon as they enter the box, there is a big black, can't miss it. Everyone really, who is able to, does want to make a donation because they're so thankful, you know, just unfortunately, some people are not in that position. So no, it's very clearly right in plain view. And most people that are new registries will ask, you know, does it cost money? Because that is an important issue to some of them. So they say there's a donation box, you know, right, you can ask the driver. So yeah, they, it's very easy for them, it's right out in the open. And I really feel that the people who are able to, you know, do-
Okay. All right, thank you, Ellen. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, you know, by coincidence, one of the issues that we're gonna be, one of the, one of the items on the new business is actually a resolution regarding the TRIP program. And the TRIP program is that Township Riders Initiative Program that we operate with PACE and with four other townships. So with PACE and with these four other townships, Schaumburg, Palatine, Hanover, and, is it Wheeling? Wheeling, I think it is. They allow, while we have to stay within the township, we're just a little over the boundaries, the TRIP program allows us, allows us, us to schedule people to go on medical appointments outside of the township in other areas. And it's $5 each way, which is not bad at all. So it's a complement to the program that we run within the township for medical purposes. We can arrange for transportation for people through the TRIP program to areas outside of the township. And then there's the Discount Taxi Program, the Dial-A-Ride. That has not been working real well here recently, and that's because the taxis, there's, they have a limited number of taxicab drivers or they're, they have a scarcity of taxicab drivers and a lot of times when they're contacted to participate, to pick up someone under this program, there's no one available. So it's been a little bit more difficult recently. But it's a discount program for 55 and older and disabled people. And I think it's a $5 charge too. I think it's a $5 charge as well too, is what it is. And it's, I think it's a valuable service, but I think the two most important ones are what we do and what TRIP does. So those are kind of the package of transportation systems that we have that sort of, that sort of overlap and complement each other. Okay, let's-
I had a question for you, George. For the TRIP service thing, you said that it could be beyond the boundaries, but there has to be a limit. How many miles or is there a limitation?
Can it go outside of the four, the five townships? Do you know? I mean, there's five townships involved with this, we all contribute.
The TRIP bus?
Yeah.
Yes, it does. And it does go to some of the VA areas, but there is a limit. To extend that limit, would we go to-
Yeah, and I think they can, I think they actually can select locations even. I mean, if they have an area, they do, and then they could, like I think the VA up at Great Lakes, I think they can go all the way up there, even though it's not in their service area, it's a specific location that where there's a need. I'm pretty sure that like Great Lakes, Great Lakes, they'll, you can, a bus can be arranged to go up there with a group of people. So I think it's an area and it's specific locations that have been agreed upon. Okay, let's move forward then. Thank you for, thank you, Erica and Ellen. And I really, we're gonna continue doing this in terms of cycling, the department heads back through to talk to us, just to keep you all, to keep us all kind of aware of where they are, what they're doing and what they're seeing going forward. Because I think it's important for the board to be familiar with what services we provide and how they provide them and what's involved with it, because you guys are responsible for the budget. And you're funding these, or these groups and you need to understand what you're funding and why you're funding it. Okay, let's go to reports. Connie is not here. She submitted a written report, which I think you've all seen. She's had a difficult year with the county assessor, has had a lot of troubles, a lot of issues in terms of, in terms of the issuing of the tax bills and, and just the assessment, whole assessment process. So Connie is very frustrated with that. She's not sure exactly, they don't seem to be on the normal cycle that they're on right now. They're out of sync a little bit, but they're, they're continuing to work with, with, with the citizens and when the, when the, when it opens, the appeal period opens again, they're, they're ready to go. And she and I have had a discussion. She's got a good staff, she's comfortable with the staff she has, she feels they can meet the needs that are out there. It's just the inconsistency in, in terms of the demand and when, when assistance needed and when it sort of, when it ebbs and flows, it's so inconsistent now, partially because of the county, but the overall, the trend continues to be up. Demand continues to grow as our property taxes go higher and higher and people are, I mean, more and more aware of the impact it's having on them and what they can do to sort of manage that. Okay, let's see, the clerk's report?
I just have two items on my report. We had one FOIA request that information was available from the village, not from us, so we did give that information out to contact the village. And then our Agency Grants Committee has gone through all the grant applications. Next week, we'll be meeting with six of the agencies, some of those are new agencies, to get more information. So we are on track with that. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, Supervisor's report. I don't have too much, but for this time, we're in the process of developing the budget. We've asked each of the department heads to submit a budget. In the past, the administrator and Erica just put it together and then the supervisor. I've asked the department heads to submit a budget so they know how much, what they're asking for and, you know, what, what, what it costs to run their department. I think they should be aware of that. So we have an extra step, but I think with that process, and then Paul and Erica will get it, and then they'll smooth it, and then I'll sit down with them and then I'll come to the board. And then on the agency grant, I think the Agency Grant Committee's doing a great job. They'll be able to come to us with a proposal and say, here's who we recommend that we fund this year. And I think it's gonna be a much more efficient, I think it's gonna be a much more effective. And I think, and I think our grants will be more impactful as a result of this. And I think they're doing a great job. And I think the involving Cory and Luanne and in that process, our, our users of these services or who we, those that refer these, these people to these services have a better idea of who we should be supporting, what we shouldn't be supporting. Along that same time, Jocelyn Center, we're very close to signing that agreement. If you remember, this is the telepsych service for, for diagnosis as well as then bed management. We had some legal discussions, get lawyers involved. It always takes a little longer, but we're, I think we're getting through that and we should be able to sign that, that document and that contract and get that up and running here relatively shortly. On the remediation front, if you remember, I think I mentioned last time, that 2400 Arlington Heights Road, we received a notification of a, an open remediation issue, something 30 years old, that I think they discovered because of the issues here. They were probably going through their files and found that this was open. What it related to was a, two tanks in the ground at 2400 that they didn't find any contamination, but there was water in one of the tanks when they took them out. And water means that there was, that shouldn't have been in there, they afraid that meant a leak. And then there was no, no resolution of that. No, the, the tanks were taken out, a reference number was generated by the, by the state, but it was never followed through. So I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but what we've done is our lawyer said that due to our, the way our contract was written with the purchasers of that property, that we not only don't own the property, but that we don't have legal responsibility for the, any, any further remediation. They're drafting a letter that we'll send to the EPA saying that we are not the owner and not, and are not legally responsible. So hopefully that'll resolve it and then they will deal directly with the new owner. And this property here, we have, our attorneys have said that we have, that the issue has been resolved. The old NFR from the early 2000s will stand, further remediation is not needed. There is one issue now that has risen about how much ground has to be covered by an impermeable surface. We felt it was maybe more limited than it is, raising questions about how do we build the bike safety and the challenge course. So that's being worked through right now too. Every time you think you're, you've gotta resolve, something else pops up. So we're dealing with that right now. What we're hoping though is to be able to work through that and be able to have the bike safety and the challenge course construction beginning early next spring and, and working by, by later spring. And that would kind of resolve that longstanding issue. Along with it, we are looking to, if you've been in the back, there's a bathroom that's, that's not used between the big open space and the bike safety. We're looking at redoing that area and turn, and, and sort of redevelop, or renovating that bathroom so that kids or people using the challenge course or using the bike safety can go and use it and go back. We'll probably clean up the bike safety at the same time and it won't be shared challenge course and bike safety. We'll create in that big open space a cage for Renee to store her stuff in, so bike safety is just bike safety. And then there'll be a bathroom there that can be used by people using the kids and so forth, using the back area. The only other major construction item along with that is we're looking at replacing the fence just along the east side, not along the west with ComEd. Just, we don't feel it's that important at this point. If we're gonna allocate funds, we'll do what, where it affects the residents. And that fence is starting to fall, fall apart. So the major projects next year will probably be the fence, bike safety and challenge course and a renovation of part of the back of the building there. I think those are the only major. And we are, as Ellen said, we do have, we are establishing capital funds that are established for, that are built up in anticipation of the life of a, of, we replace a bus every four, five, four years or three years. We'll build funds for the replacement every three years. We'll build funds for every 10 years, replacing the air conditioning systems or the heating systems. We'll, we'll develop a reserve or a fund, we'll reserve funds for the anticipated repair cycle that these, or replacement cycle that these, that these, these major capital expenses would be involved with. And that's in process right now too. The bus, we won't get anything for that bus that we traded in. It's, it's a, there's not gonna be that, there's not gonna be much of an offset if, I mean, if not much, if any. And so we are working on, as she said, on a customized bus. So you have the 212 and then a larger 2021 and that should be, should be adequate going forward at this stage. We probably do wanna look at expanding our senior services a little bit. We're finding that people are talking about, do you have this, do you have that? And our senior services are very focused and they're very good, but we may fill it in a little bit by some other services that may make sense. For instance, we are adding the wellness checks. We are continuing that from COVID, that we stood up in COVID, we're gonna continue that. And we are, for people that sign up for wellness checks- And we are, for people that sign up for wellness checks, get called once a week. And then also the shift program, which we're in the process of setting up, which is we help seniors with identifying which Medicare programs are, are appropriate for them, what they should sign up for, what, what programs they should use or shouldn't use based on their needs. And that's done with volunteers. And we had hoped to have that up this year, but it's going to be next year. So those are just some, some, some comments on those areas. I don't think there's anything else that really is front burner. I mean, there's a list of, list of thirty, forty things. Probably, there's, there's always tons of stuff going on, but those are the ones probably you should be most, most aware of. Holiday party, we won't do a Christmas party, it's going to be a holiday party. We're going to do it in January. Enough stuff's going on in December. Probably be like the second, third week in January, it'll be a holiday party where we, that's a, a recognition and thank you party for the, for the staff and obviously all the elected officials should, should, should attend. And we'll, you'll get that date as early as you can. Any other questions from you guys? Anything outstanding? Okay? All right, that's the supervisor. Can I get a, a motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No correspondence, no old business under new business? What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get in place several, several of the core key policies that we need to have. These are policies that where there's, where there will be no question as to what we're doing or not doing. I mean, a lot of things, it's not that important that things aren't totally spelled out, but there are certain areas where we, we need to have them spelled out. And there's like four or five policies, two, I have two other ones other than this, like compensation, agency grant procedure. Those, those, those policies, we, those documents, we need to turn into policies. And then there's a couple others that we need to address, that we, we just should have in place. We, for some reason, the past supervisors have not found that necessary. I just think that in some situations, you need to be able to refer to something and say, no, this is what it is. For instance, with the agency grants, one of the reasons for that is if somebody comes in late to, you know, and says, oh, I forgot to send an invoice in in time. In the past, that we, we were conflicted in what we should do or shouldn't do. We have a policy in place, we don't have to go through that process. That's what it is. People know what it is and that's, that's, so there's no, well, we do it for this person, but don't do it for that person. So the one I've got out here today, policy one, is the electronic participation in open meetings. If you guys been through that, this follows the state law. You were, there has to be a, there has to be a quorum, physical quorum of three. However, beyond that physical quorum of three, other board members can participate if they're by telephone or by Zoom, if they're absent for the following reasons, personal illness or disability, business reasons, township business reasons, or family or other emergencies. You got to notify the, the, you would have to notify the, the supervisor or clerk or administrator, preferably administrator or clerk, in a, in a reasonable amount of time ahead of time so we can, so they can get it set up so that you can participate. But in any particular case, this would allow, if you're on a business trip or if you're sick at home, that you can participate in the meeting. And the meeting can function as long as there is three, three physically, three people physically present. And then the, a business can be carried out and those that are participating from the outside electronically can participate as well, too. There is one exception to this. That's if the, if the governor declares a disaster like he did for COVID back when, then the rules can be loosened. In that case, and I, I don't remember all the, there has to be one person present here and everyone else can participate via Zoom and then other things have to be done so public can participate. But this is under normal circumstances. This is the procedure the state, the state requires and that we will follow. So is there any questions or anything on this? Anybody have any problems with this?
Yeah, so this is, this just concerns the board members though, right? In terms of governance, it's not like for the public to.
No.
Do a public, yeah, okay.
No, this is for, for, for us to hold a meeting, there has to be three people physically present to have the quorum. But if there's those three people present, then other board members can participate under these reasons.
Okay.
Via Zoom or telephone and are considered present for that meeting.
So would you consider, would you then assume then that, that you, this, this could be, so like a board member could actually attend, you know, from the outside all the time? In other words.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
Well, let's say if you have three, if you have three, you need three.
Yeah.
Right, for a quorum.
Right.
Let's say you, you have it. Or let's say you don't have it.
Right.
So then would you say, well, you try to get ahold of one of us who are sick?
No.
So we.
It has to be, it has to be three physically present.
Oh, physically present.
Physically present, three physically present. The other two could participate via electronically or one or two.
Right.
Electronically if they meet these requirements. If there's not three present here, we can't conduct business.
Okay, okay. I thought, okay.
Yeah.
No problem. Gotcha.
Now, like I said, under a disaster rules or emergency rules that the government, that the governor creates, there has, was an exception period here where it was different. But this is the way we'd normally operate.
Okay.
And, and one of the other issues we have to address is, is there a limit on how many times you could? No, there shouldn't be. As long as you meet these requirements, it doesn't matter. I mean, if you're laid up sick for a couple months, you could still participate.
Yeah, I would think so, especially, especially with the first one.
Yeah.
Personal or disability. I mean, a disability might be six months.
Let's say you're hit, you're hit by a car and you were laid up at home. Yeah, you could participate then as long as we had three people physically here.
Good.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion approved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
I had a question or two, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
So if, if this is obviously approved, so I can't find that particular page in my pamphlet.
It's on the back of.
But.
Back of my report.
The back of her report, yeah.
Oh, okay. Will, will we be getting some, some guidance and stuff like, so if you wanted to, if you had for one of these reasons to participate?
Right.
Is, is this explained in here of how you would do that? I mean, other than just calling up and saying?
Phone or, you, you call Paul and just say, I, I'm not going to be able to make it because I'm sick or I'm, I'm, I'm on a, I'm, I'm down at the toy conference. It wouldn't happen, but let's say it does.
Right.
You're down at a township, you're representing a township, you're a township official at an event where you needed to be present, you could call in and still participate in the meeting via telephone or Zoom and that meeting. And Paul, you'd talk to Paul and Paul would set it up for you with, with.
Yeah.
So they'd send you a Zoom link?
Yeah.
Specifically, yeah, you talk to Paul and he'll send you an email with all the instructions and all that.
Right.
But so, so I would need to be having a, a device available to me, whether it's like my iPhone?
Yeah.
Or a computer that has a camera on it?
Yeah.
Because if I, if I'm not like at a computer that has.
No, you would, you would need to have a computer or if it's just a telephonically that you call in.
So I wouldn't need to have the video?
No.
Okay.
It could be telephonic, too. We could, we, we used to do that where they put a speaker.
Right.
And you could call in and the speaker would, you'd listen via speaker or talk via speaker.
So, so, yeah, that, that answers my question.
Right, right. But I, I would strongly suggest that if you, that you have an access.
Right.
To a computer or something that you would take with you, that you could, that you could use that for.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, so any, any, if, we've had first and second questions? Any further questions, Greg?
No, you've answered them all. Thank you.
Roca.
Trustee Niordowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Woteke?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, last thing here is Resolution 202114. That's the 2022 TRIP Transit Grant and Service Agreement, which we, we kind of talked about. That is, this is setting up the, this is our agreement for 2022 going forward with PACE and with the four other townships to provide the, the TRIP Transit Program. You should have had the agreement there. We, we've, we've been doing these for numbers of years. Nothing is particularly different. Let's see, I don't think, there, there is actually, there is a federal, one of the federal grants actually has reduced our cost a little bit here. But in any particular case, is there a motion approved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Once again, this is the TRIP program that we are, we are agreeing to participate in for next year. Okay, Roca?
Trustee Niordowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Woteke?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, is there any other, does anybody have any other business that, that needs to be mentioned? Nothing can be taken action on, but does anybody have anything else that needs to be said?
No.
Okay, is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.